...date number ten, which deals with vacancies. We have update number twelve, which I request was information on the canine program. And thirteen, which is a calculation of the fire department overtime. And so we'll take that up during deliberation. Under persons to be heard, I didn't get the slip, but I know Abner here on the list. Would you grab the list when you come up? Thank you. Just you. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council. Abner Hope, Fire Chief. I just wanted to briefly introduce our new Assistant Chief of the Fire Department. I have Scott Brainerd with me tonight. He got in on the ferry yesterday, started work today. And, uh, great to come on up, Scott. He, um, he comes from Climate Falls. He's got many years experience in the fire service. And I just wanted to welcome him and have a chance for you all to put a face with a name. So, welcome, Scott.
Welcome. Thanks for having me here tonight.
All right. Well, settle in and we'll talk to you later, I'm sure. Has nobody else under persons to be heard? Bring this down to unfinished business. Item A, proposed two sixteen general government operating capital improvement budget deferred from November twelfth. So, um, I guess we could probably start with the, uh, let's go ahead and start with the updates, just so we have clarification on them. One of them was vacancies and vacancy rates. Did anybody have any questions or comments, or would you like to take a while to study those and bring them back? We can bring those up at a later date. Item number twelve is the canine and hen were estimated two fifteen. I asked to see this. I know that last budget cycle, we discussed the canine program. And in this, they, Bob provided us with the, uh, the compensation and the other items that are involved with that. And so...
Your Honor?
Yes?
I have a question regarding that.
Yes.
Is the chief there and do you like him or not?
Josh is here. Josh, would you come up?
So, I'm curious, with all the whoop-de-doo in the, especially the marijuana world in our state, what kind of changes is that gonna make for Booker? Is he still a good dog? You know what I mean?
Well, basically covering the memo that the chief wrote back in March, Booker's a four cent dog, which means it smells four different scents. Booker can't determine what he smell, or he can't communicate what he smell. He may be smelling marijuana, but we don't, he reacts the same way to all the, all the drugs. Having, which puts kind of us in an awkward situation if we try to use him in front of a case. We had a case where we had backpack and we went before a judge and the judge simply asked, can we tell, does he smell marijuana or does he smell meth after the court, after the election? And we said we couldn't tell and he was, we did, we were denied the search warrant.
Now, you can't untrain Booker?
It's a two to three year process, the untraining. And right now, at his age, that would put him basically at retirement, or it'd be a couple of years out short of retirement.
Thank you.
Yes, Dick.
Yeah, while we're doing this, um, so what was, with what's going on, would it be beneficial to have a dog that can do all five or however, whatever a new dog would do?
Uh, well, actually, what we'd have is one, you want one less. You want a three scent dog. It covers heroin, meth, and cocaine. And right now Booker can also smell marijuana, which is the fourth scent.
Okay. So, you're wanting, you want to do away with the marijuana picking up? Is that what I think you said?
Well, I mean, ultimately, I know when we were up here before, it was made pretty clear, this is the council's dog, so it's, it's what you guys decide. But we have trouble using this dog simply for the fact that he can, he can't tell the difference between marijuana or the other drugs.
So, I guess we just ask the question of, of here, what it costs? I think that's what Bob asked. So, we'll just have to decide whether this is a dog we need to keep, if we want one, we want another one. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Judy.
So, what do you use Booker for now?
Uh, right now, we use, um, basically for promotion, for speaking at schools, um, speaking to different groups. There are some limited times when we might use him on the back end of a case, but mostly it's, it's for promotion, talking to kids.
Can you take him up to the school?
We can take him up to school, but there's other issues with the school, yes.
Yes, go ahead, Dave.
The twenty-one thousand, or, yeah, in compensation, is that in addition to what the, the, that officer's basic pay rate, or is that figured in there, or how, how is that?
That is, my understanding is that would be in addition to his, I mean, he has a base salary, but then he receives compensation for handling the dog and then also the other expenses with the dog.
Okay.
Bob?
Yes?
So, we want a three cent dog, if I, not a three cent dog, but a three cent dog. What's that gonna cost? Hypothetically.
Um, it's not gonna cost, well, it's gonna cost something that I believe we paid ten thousand for Booker.
Ten, something like that.
I mean, it's gonna be the same price.
It's the same price.
It's, it's an extensive upfront cost for any kind of canine, 'cause they come trained.
Is he useful to you guys, or would a new dog be useful? Boy, that's a good answer right there.
Yeah, I know. You know, there, there's a debate back and forth.
Right.
Well, there was. Um, you know, you could still use him for stuff coming in, addictions, that kind of thing, but, I mean, ultimately, I don't want to speak for the chief. It's ultimately his decision.
Thank you.
So, do the troopers have a dog?
Yes, they do.
So, can you borrow the trooper's three cent dog?
Oh, we can work with him, yes. They won't, they won't loan it to us. They will, the handler's gonna with it, so, yes. We, uh, they're working cases, yes.
So, a community our size, do we really need two dogs?
Careful.
Once again, I'd have to defer to the chief on that one.
What about areas that are, that all four cents are illegal in areas, like airport?
Um, there are situations where you can use a four cent dog. Uh, they use four cent dogs in, um, most jails. Uh, they use four cent dogs, yeah, still places where, there's plenty of places where it's illegal, marijuana's illegal, in other states where they can use them still. They do, and this is, this is not just us. This is Washington, Colorado, we're all going through the same thing.
If they, one more question, you may not want to answer this, but you, you kind of alluded that, uh, there was an issue with the dog in the school. Is that because there's too much of it up there?
It just goes crazy, civil rights.
No, the, it, it's, there's a lot of, lot of rights with the students up there. Um, they already, the, the staff can go search wherever they want, as long as they have a problem caused. The other problem is all the lockers are bented together. I mean, they're, they're, so, dog may hit on one locker, but he may be sit, come to the first locker where the scent's coming out. So, there's a couple of different issues up there.
The kids are up there to go to school, they're not up there to smoke dope, so.
I don't remember having rights when I went to school.
I don't either.
We never had those rights.
Any, any other questions at this time?
Thank you, dear.
Thank you. I'm gonna go back again here to the, to the beginning. There are some things in the beginning where it said, update number two, um, in regards to, uh, the impact of the rate increases, there was no motion recommended at this time for that. The general government operating capital budget, update number three, uh, was a revenue and appropriate sum of reserve, number one, and, um, again, there was, uh, no recommended motion. Then we had general government, uh, operating capital budget update number four, interdepartmental charges, which was, uh, discussed, I think, a little bit. Again, I don't think there was any particular item or motion attached to that one. And if we should page down to item number four, uh, five, excuse me. I think there is a motion attached for that one. So, um, that's general government operating capital budget update number five, revised appropriation requests, uh, for telecommunications. And there's a motion there.
Your Honor?
Yes.
And we have the city council revise the two thousand sixteen general government operating and capital budget departmental appropriation request for telecommunications, account number six five oh dash zero one, as detailed in the city manager's memorandum dated November sixteenth, two thousand fifteen, resulting in a net reduction of thirty-nine thousand seven dollars.
Been moved and seconded? Judy, do you have any, anything to add?
No. I think we talked, I think Carl brought up the date on this, didn't you already?
Yeah. Yeah, I see any others. Katie, would you call the role, please?
Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Zingy?
Yes.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Kiper?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Eisen?
Yes.
Kuss?
And then update number six was, um, the update in matrix consulting group, the bulk reaction items. Got forward for discussions. And then, um, move this to, anybody have anything they want? All right, that brings us to, um, two thousand sixteen general government operating capital budget update, update number seven, uh, the cost of living adjustment for general government non-represented employees. That's, uh, down on page fifty-four. And a motion?
Your Honor, I move the city council amendment, two thousand sixteen general government operating capital budget to increase the cost of pers, wait, is it number seven?
Yes.
Okay. To increase the cost of personnel services and benefits by a hundred and nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-four, in order to provide a two percent cost of living adjustment for the classified nonrepresented employees of general government.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded, Dave? Katie, would you call the role, please?
Kiper?
Yes.
Eisen?
Yes.
Gage?
No.
Yes.
Kuss?
Oh, you said no? Didn't you say, I said no.
Okay. Now it's your turn. Harris?
Yeah, it's for me.
Oh, I did?
Yeah.
Cotty?
KJ?
I'm scared now. Yes, ma'am.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Bring us the budget update number eight, uh, two sixteen general government operating capital budget alcohol and drug testing results. There was no, nothing attached to that, no way of a motion. Budget update number nine, employee exit interview information. And we already talked about ten, and we talked about twelve, so that brings us down to item number thirteen, which is the calculation of fire department overtime. At the request of, uh, Mr. Kuss. Dick, did you have any questions?
I, no, that, that helps. Uh, I, and I would just like to say there's half a dozen other information things that, that the manager and human resources gave to us, and I'd like to thank them for the work, 'cause they, it helps understand what we've done, where we're going, whether I agree with it or not. But, um, you know, we're stuck with some stuff. Some of it's pretty costly.
All right. Well, that brings us back to the deferred, uh, budget, and I believe we got through the, uh, the manager, and we are starting on H1, which is finance. There's a summary there to go through. Turn over and it gives you the structure, um, with the goals and stuff. Bob, could, could you tell me a little bit about the procurement, the procurement card program that you guys are using, with that, with that program, yes, or planning to use?
Uh, yes, the procurement card program is, it's kind of like a, um, a debit card. It's intended to replace credit cards and allow employees to purchase small items, um, using the procurement card without having to do any type of transaction. We do have a pilot program of one department. It's usually, is to see how well it works, because we need to make sure that we design a very effective internal control system so that people don't misuse the card. Unfortunately, with the staff turnover, we haven't been able to go beyond the pilot program, but we believe it's something that we really should be doing, so it's something we'd like to try and implement citywide, uh, sometime next year.
And so, does every employee carry one of these cards?
Well, not every employee. Certain employees would be allowed to have a procurement card. But the, there's a lot of controls in place where you can actually monitor the usage independently of what the, what the card holder is doing. And if we see any evidence that the card is being misused, we have the ability to cut it off. We can also set the, the dollar limit, and we can also identify what type of transactions you can use the procurement card for. So, there's a lot of strict controls in place, and so it's something that, um, we would like to look at doing in the future.
Is there a cost associated with using that card?
Uh, actually, no. If we piggyback on the space contrast, it would be free. But we also have a proposal from a private bank here in town, the police, that they can do a very, a very similar five, three. But we haven't seen that proposal yet. You may recall the, uh, the petty PO system?
Right.
Okay, with the procurement card, which in a way replaced part of the...
Yeah, and that had a limit on it also.
Yes, it did, it was seven hundred and fifty dollars before that.
Again, under your goals, you had completed water and wastewater rate study in anticipation of metered rates. And it's more or less targeting the large commercial customers, but we've also heard from some disparity in other customers where the, the usage may not be there, but the line size is due to sprinkler systems. I don't know how we get that type of information, but, uh...
Definitely, that, if that is an ongoing issue, uh, the current rate study right now doesn't, update doesn't address that particular issue, but we can certainly bring it forth when the consultants make their presentation and ask them to come back in and, you know, look at some of the alternatives. They're planning on making two presentations. The first presentation will be to present the results based on the scope of the staff, and then at that point, we can provide some other alternative to request options that we would like them to employ.
Well, if they're gonna be coming anyway for a presentation, could you at least brief them that that's part, might be a question, so...
I, I can do that. I guess I would like a, just a little bit of direction on how, how far we want to go with that scope. I mean, there are certain customers that may have this issue, that we may have to come up with the, a uniform policy that addresses all of our customers. I don't know if we can pick and choose.
No, I, I understand that, but I guess some background on what other communities are doing to address that, because I know that we're not the only ones with that issue. And what it is, of course, is with the sprinkler system, is the potential of using the full volume of that water, but very seldom do they do unless, of course, they have a, a fire in, in the facility. Uh, so, we have a potential of having to provide that water, but realistically, they're using a three-quarter inch line or a one-inch line for their service and not the full four or six-inch main that they're being built for.
I'll tell you what I'll do, I'll, I'll raise that issue with them, and if it turns out that we need to modify the scope somehow, I'll bring the pastor counsel to, to the direction.
I'd appreciate that, thank you.
Dick? Bob, could we get a copy of the scope that these guys have been given? I know it's probably similar to the past, but so that we know just what it is they're chopping this up into and trying to feed us?
Yeah, sure, I'd be happy to do that. When we award a contract, we'll have a copy of it, so I'll be happy to get to it.
Sure. Yeah, and... Did you have something else, Dick?
A, a different topic.
Go ahead.
Um, well, what I've got's a general question. Can, throughout the whole budget, uh, item number five oh eight dash zero zero called other benefits, seems to be something that took quite a jump. And I don't understand what's in there and how it was distributed between departments.
Yeah, that's H3. That is a, that's a complicated one, but let me start by telling you what's in it. There are two things that are in it. One is, um, unemployment, uh, compensation. And then the second component is if causes things to fluctuate dramatically, is the amount of accrued sick leave and vacation leave that the employees will pay upon termination. Get paid when they leave the city employment. If they have vacation leave or sick leave that they haven't used, they're allowed to get paid for that. We were trying to come up with a, a percentage that would work across the board. Unfortunately, taking that approach will be variations within the departments that don't seem to make sense, but in total, the amount that we're asking for, if you would add up all the departments together, it's based on a two-year average of a, of actual We've come up with a, another way of doing it, but we didn't have time to implement it in, into our budget document. And what we think we would like to do going forward is try to, see, the biggest swing you have to do when an employee retires from the city, when they retire from the city, they're eligible to cash in all their sick leave up to about fifty-five, fifty-five days of sick leave. And I think it's all the employees, but I could be wrong about that. We don't book that liability because we don't know how many employees are going to retire from the city. There's no way we can tell. But what we've decided to do is go ahead and budget for it at the time that an employee re-shares the age where they're eligible to retire, which means we can be more specific to the department. So, what that means is we might look at, uh, I'll just pick a department, information technology department, and if we have an employee that re-shares, is going to reach retirement age next year in two thousand sixteen, we will go ahead and estimate what the pay would be if they were to retire from the city in two thousand sixteen. Not totally accurate, but that's the way we would book it from an accounting point of view, because once we're obligated to pay that liability, we should book it. So, it'll match up with the budget, but they, doesn't necessarily mean they're gonna retire next year, but that's when we incur the liability and we know we're gonna have to pay something. So, that's the approach that we're thinking about taking in two thousand seventeen, and if we take that approach, it'll be more specific to the department, and you won't see the fluctuation that you're seeing right now. We can better explain why it's happening. The only thing that we have to do in order to make it work is we have to come up with a good definition of what is a bona fide retirement, that we will pay sick leave upon termination. And right now, the definition's a little bit vague. I know that's a long answer to your question.
No, but it, it helps, uh...
We know it's a problem. We've been trying to come up with the best way to do it.
So, right now, this is an actual cost, or is it a projected cost that you kind of divvied up?
It's the projected cost based on the city at the whole.
Right.
Try to allocate it based on labor, which I don't think is the best way to do it, but that's the...
And you indicated that about sixty-five days of sick leave is what, for...
Sixty-five days.
What about annually, or what do you want to call it?
Annual leave is not really the issue for us, because, I mean, any time an employee doesn't use the annual leave they're entitled to. We book that every year. So, that portion of the, of the other benefit cost, which is really isn't an issue. What really drives it is what happens when an employee retires, and we end up having to pay the sick leave.
So...
It's not on the book, because sick leave, we don't, we don't necessarily accrue sick leave the way we do vacation leave.
Have you got vacation leave built into this part here?
Yes, it is. And the reason why is because the employee earns that vacation, and we fund it a hundred percent, so it's technically payable at the time they earn it.
Is, is there a limit on how much they can accumulate?
Yeah, the limit is, uh, I believe it's four hundred dollars can be, can be, um, earned over the course of an employee's, uh, employment with the city. They can carry an amount in excess of four hundred thousand, I'm sorry, four hundred dollars, yeah, four hundred hours, yeah, four hundred dollars, uh, with the approval of the city manager.
Okay. Do you, do you have a total for those numbers?
Big time.
Do you have a total for those numbers in the machine?
Uh, yeah.
Sometime dump them off.
Okay.
What's in that?
So, where are we at? We are on H3 right now.
But it's a base discount, you know, I mean, it's...
Yeah, it's a question of... It just was a number that was going up and fluctuated.
Your Honor? Okay. It's not a question, but I, I would like to point out that, and congratulate him on receiving her certificate of achievement, uh, for excellence in financial reporting, and it says this is your thirty-sixth certificate, most awarded to a municipality in the state of Alaska.
Right, we got, we got the mo.
Yeah.
Ancre's just right behind us with thirty-five, so we don't want to blow it.
Congratulations on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions on finance? Judy?
And Bob, I just want to thank you for, um, those quarterly financial reports that you sent me. They're very valuable, and I appreciate all the help you've given me the last couple of years.
Thank you.
With all the questions I've had.
Keep them coming.
Don't worry.
I'm leaving.
You bet.
I'm gonna have a cough on the long talk.
You better, KJ. Take team, I come, you can go. All right. Any other questions on finance?
Yeah, well, thank you.
Before we go into information of technology? We are in information technology. The computers. Your Honor? Curtis, on funding sources, how do you determine the percentage of increase in those particular departments? I see they all went up, uh, basically five point two percent.
I think that's a question better directed...
Break it toward Bob, okay?
We have a, a formula that's a little bit complicated. Be happy to maybe sit down with you, talk about it, but that, uh, worksheet, there's to have to, um, ticket budget update number four within department character, that is the worksheet, there's, it drives those costs, and it's based on an allocation of, um, uh, in the case of general government, based on direct labor. Uh, in the case of KPU, it's based on a, a study that was prepared by an outside consultant that we hired for telecommunications, because we wanted to make sure that the allocation would meet the SEC requirements. And, uh, that one has about five or six different subsets that we use in order to come up with a denominator. The one thing I can say for sure is that we, we do do the, um, we do the same method every year, so it's consistent across the board. And I believe, I'm not sure if this is the one, uh, I don't want to make, I'm, I'm not sure. I think there may have been a problem with the way we showed the, the funding sources in the two thousand fifteen budget. You may remember that we did a five percent reduction. And I'll take that five percent reduction, got factored into the, into the funding, wasn't updated in the funding source pager, the section of the, of the two thousand fifteen budget, so some of those numbers go off over there.
Okay. Thank you. You bet, Dick.
While Bob is there, um, since we, we jumped quicker than I thought out of, from somewhere to finance.
Dick, you can go back to anything.
Let's see, two questions. Update me... Update me on the status of the new accounting system. Are we there yet?
The new accounting system is still a work in progress. We basically have implemented all the modules, but there's, um, all the major modules. There's some side programs, like for example, uh, electronic personnel action forms that we haven't implemented. We may also do a grant module. And then we have another function called E Suite, which allows the, um, our customers to get more information from the accounting system regarding things like, uh, electric consumption. They can actually go in and look at their electric account and see what their consumption is, their historical trends, which might be helpful for those that want to conserve energy. So that's part of the work in progress. And then quite the other thing too, is you have to remember, we, we didn't really upgrade our accounting system. We replaced it with a total replacement. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done to update our written procedures and, um, also learn how to use the system. The system's complicated. That's a good thing in the sense that it gives us flexibility. The downside is it takes a long time to learn how to use it. So I think it's a kind of good investment for us, but it's also been a, it's been a kind of steep running curve too.
So out of that system now, you're getting Judy making quarterly reports that probably come a lot easier than they used to.
We can put them together a lot quicker than we could with the A S four hundred. Um, we still have, um, some formatting issues, um. The one downside with going with the canned system is everything is standardized. And so if we want to optimize things a little bit for our particular needs, we have to go in and make modifications using another program. The heart of the accounting system is called Google Analytics. That program's also complicated to learn how to use, but we have some people that know how to use it. And those that do know how to use it, they're doing a really good job with it. They're putting, get, to get, together some unit information.
Okay, then the last question, and I apologize, I didn't look any further down in capital, but the, the twenty grand that's, uh, under capital here says financial accounting system replacement. Is that just part of keeping this? The capital account, it shows twenty grand for financial accounting system replacement. Is that part of just continuing to?
Yeah, that is definitely covering the event that we need to convert some additional costs regarding to self-reversing additional equipment. What we have found out in the past is when you're implementing a new system or function, you discover some things that we need. And so we want to have the flexibility to go in and do it quickly because if you can't do it quickly, then it, uh, it slows down the process and the cost goes up.
Okay, thank you.
But as you can tell, when you look at the historical trend, we've been asking for twenty thousand for the last couple of years, but I think in two thousand fourteen, I think we only spent, uh, seven thousand of that.
Yeah, true, seventy-four hundred, yeah.
So it's not like we're spending it all, we only spend it on the week.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Bob.
So what, what are we using on the A S four hundred right now?
Curtis might be able to answer that question better than I can, but basically we just use our, our finances, as you said, to store information that was accumulated prior to converting to the new accounting system. For example, if we need to do some research, going back to two thousand eight, two thousand nine, we go into the A M box.
That, that information, was it converted somehow to the new system?
Well, what we converted, we checked the, uh, ending balances in two thousand twelve when we, when we did the conversion. So we brought the balances forward, but we didn't bring all the details. So we're using the A S four hundred as kind of a, a depository for archiving information.
And there are two other aside systems that are still active on the I series. Um, the police have these old federal cases that were put in there in a product called Edit Text. It's kind of a cryptic old word processor. And there's not really an easy method to convert those out. So we are still, we've gone through a series of migration of all the different software products off the I series platform. There's still a handful left, so the police do have their federal cases on there. Uh, there's still the historical lookup stuff for finance. There's some small inventory programs for electric, for transformers and poles. And there's some file transfer utilities that we've used on there that's kind of multi-departmental. So that's kind of the, we're getting closer and closer to this isolating it to a telephone billing system, but we're not quite there yet.
If that, when that is just made a, a telephone billing system, when you do these budgetary updates, is that just billed to the telephone?
My expectation at this time is the next time we go through an upgrade cycle in the hardware, that will probably be funded directly by telephone as opposed to I T. Uh, they will probably still leverage our technical services and they pay a portion of our budget for that already, so that's kind of a separate issue.
Okay.
Uh, there's, we're going from two programmers to one, starting next year. Then I've got a bit of experience on that platform as well, but over time, that's going to keep going down and they will have to rely heavily on their vendor for that service.
Thank you, Curtis. Anybody else? All right, let's move into fire. That's on J one, overview. Goes into administration.
Okay, Lou, I've got a question on page J three and that's probably the chief's going to have to answer it, or Bob. But it talks about, I guess, getting the ambulance billings and in and out. And we talk about highest rate of return possible. And I'm, I'm curious, what is our? How many, how many of them do we actually get paid back for that we bill?
We do get reports on that monthly. Off the top of my head, I don't want to misquote the, the rate that we get. Nationally, the average is somewhere around sixty percent of ambulance billings typically that, that you see returned, but we can provide some specific numbers if you like. I do receive reports from a billing company every month. And so what we're doing is we continue to work with the billing company to make sure that it's not something that we're doing wrong on our reports that's causing the payments to be rejected, that it's just typical insurance declines that happen on a regular basis.
Might be interesting.
Yeah, I think gathered, correct, I think our rate of return is between fifty and fifty-five, if I remember correctly.
Cause it'll be interesting to know then, what's our loss?
Much harder to pinpoint, but it, it would be interesting.
It, it may be some, don't go to a lot of work, but I mean, it sounds to me like, I wonder how much we had in there for that item. It's maybe in hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Because our staff is cross-trained in response to fire any amasses, very difficult to pinpoint an exact cost for running a medical call. What portion of salaries do I attribute to staffing for medical emergencies versus staffing for fire emergencies? It's a really...
But somehow, rather though you're billing?
We, we bill it at rates based on the, the Medicare allowable rate and what we've established within the city ordinance. And, um, we've set our rates high enough that we can capture all the Medicare and Medicaid funding, the, the maximum that they will pay. Insurance companies, a lot of times will pay you about seventy percent upfront and they'll decline the rest. And then your billing company and how good they are at going back and asking for more will determine where we really end up as far as the collection rate goes.
Yeah, so we may not be able to determine what, we're subsidizing a program, but we may be able to determine what we're losing from what we're billing.
The uncollected billings, yes, we do, we get that in a report every month.
Okay.
And we could provide that. But, but we work very close with the billing company and, and we review it each month. And we're making sure that at least the things that we're doing, um, are the best that they can be so that we're capturing as much as possible. And that whatever's being declined is either because it's above the Medicare Medicaid rate or because it's typical things that insurance companies just decline because they won't pay them.
Okay, then one more question, Lou.
Yeah, go on.
I think we've got a revenue item in here from hand budgets. And is that based upon what we think we're going to get as a return? Or based upon what we?
It's a combination of what we've been getting, I believe, and, and what we expect to get based on a call log.
It's based what we believe that we're actually going to collect.
What we'll actually collect, okay, okay.
What's the, what's the, usually what's the ones that are declined by Medicare, Medicaid?
They, they have a cap depending on the type of service you provide. If you provide B L S service versus advanced life, so basic life support service versus advanced life support service. I don't know their numbers off the top of my head, but say that they'll, Medicaid allows five hundred dollars for a basic life support call and eight hundred dollars for an advanced life support call. We probably have set our rates a hundred dollars over that or something approximately. Most municipalities do that because when you send the bill, you want Medicare to say, we will pay this, this full five hundred dollars for a B L S call. And by setting our rates above that, we ensure we, we capture the, the amount that they will pay. So we expect on a Medicare patient then, in that case, that if we're billing it six hundred dollars, that we're only going to collect five hundred from those patients. And then on insurance, you expect about seventy percent that they'll pay typically upfront as long as the covered service. And then they'll initially decline a portion of it and the billing company goes back for that. And a lot of times they can get some of it, other times they can't.
So I'm looking at this example that was provided in, uh, budget update number thirteen. And this is of a seventeen years of service employee. And it shows that this particular employee gets six hundred and fifty dollars additionally a month for certificate pay. And it says that certificate pay is paid when an employee holds a certificate that is not a requirement of their job description. And I guess I just, I mean, I just want to understand it because I'm, it doesn't make sense to me right now, so.
So we have some certifications that are outlined in the contract that, that we, with the amounts that they receive for certificate pay. And when an employee holds a certificate, so say I'm a firefighter E M T position, I'm not required to be a paramedic. If I go out and get my paramedic license, then I get a certificate pay for that. Or, uh, if I'm a firefighter and not a captain, I don't have to be a fire officer. But if I go out and get my fire officer, that, that would pay for that. Um, their job-related certifications that for their current position, they may not be required to hold, but they've negotiated that into the contract that because of the experience that brings, which does add some value for us, um, we compensate them for that, for maintaining that certification.
How long have we had that in the contract?
I don't.
About ten years.
Since I got here.
Cause I, all of a sudden we have, are you, who's encouraging everybody to become a paramedic or E M T down there? Is that the new?
Just get the certificate.
Philosophy or, I mean, I've had people come to me that have been up at the school going, why are all these guys coming, um, paramedics? I know, I mean, it's devil fold, it's great to have them all, but it's, it's, um...
And we were at, at five and we have several of those that are retirement eligible and we provide that level of service. So, um, the idea is to continue on a rotating basis so we have new paramedics available as people get older and decide to retire. We always have a fresh experienced batch of paramedics ready to move up into those positions that do require that.
So is everybody going through that right now?
No, we have four going through this current year of our paid staff and our two volunteers that are going through that.
So six total?
Six total.
So that's sort of a catch twenty-two in the contract. Jenna Lee, Judy and then Dick.
How many, how many volunteers do you have?
We have about twenty in our, in our books. And not all of those are extremely active. Uh, we have about ten or twelve that are very active. And that's, again, that's typical, about fifty percent or so of your volunteers will be very active. The others will be members and, and participate at some level, but...
Is there, um, plans to increase that?
No, currently.
Um, Judy, then Dick, then Bob.
So how many certificates can, uh, like how many, is there a total number of certificates or?
I don't remember exactly how many are in the contract, but we've spelled out specifically which ones apply in the, in the contract.
And is there amounts there?
There are amounts tied to each certification based on the amount, the level of the certification and how much effort it takes to obtain it, what it takes to maintain it.
Okay, thank you.
Dick?
Judy answered, or asked my question. I want to know who determined the amounts and it sounds like it's something we agreed to in the contract, which we fight, fight about.
Bob?
Do we have any cap on how many people apply at one time for, uh, schooling and certification? Cause if we get ten people at once, it's going to be a budgetary nightmare.
The only one that, that has a cap on it in the contract is the fire investigator. Certificate pay is capped at four or five, I believe is the number. There is a cap for, for, uh, fire investigator.
About the number that are qualifying for the program at once, do you?
Correct, yes, only, let's say that the number's four, only four of the staff could qualify for that at one time. If anybody new gets it, they are not eligible to receive the pay until someone else drops out of that.
I think I'd like to kind of see something come along that way in regards to, cause you, if you had every volunteer jumping into that, we'd be paying that extra.
We don't pay the volunteers that certificate pay. That's for paid, that's a paid staff program under the contract.
But I, I just think in some kind of government, something to think about.
Judy?
As a company, I'm, excuse me, uh, in the budget, we have included seventy-three thousand dollars for certificate pay.
So how, is that, uh, including all these four guys that are now at school?
Excuse me. Uh, that's, 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 that is part, and it's based on, every year what we do is we go through the payroll system and we do an annual inventory of all the firefighters that have certificates. And then we calculate that off to what the annual amount is and it appears to adopt to be seventy-three thousand.
What was it last year?
I don't think it changes all that much from year to year, but I think it's probably comparable.
Judy?
So, and you say we do this because we have people who are retiring. How many people are retiring? Like we want to keep these people?
We do which, we do the...
The certificates.
We're trying to maintain a level of certification at the paramedic level due to retirements. The certificate pay is not due to retirements. That's just what's been negotiated over the past many years.
Doesn't mean they're all retiring, but it means they could retire. And if they all retired at once and we had, and we didn't replace them, we'd all be sitting up here very upset with ourselves. It's not nickel and dimes too much, folks.
Well, I don't think we're nickel and dining them, but I think it's good to have an explanation.
It is, it is.
It's just five grand a year per person.
Right.
On top of paying fees and benefits. I mean, it's a different time, a different world right now. We'd better be thinking about these things. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
In the summer, what would be the increase in the use of E M Ts to in the winter?
So over the tourist season, we probably see about sixty, between sixty and seventy percent of our calls happen over May to September and then the other forty-ish percent happen during the winter months. So we see a slight increase in call volume recently.
Mostly tours.
A combination of, um, cruise ship passengers and just the community as a whole is more active at that time of year.
Can you determine of the unpaid ambulance calls, how many of them are coming from the summer cruise ship traffic versus the rest of us in town?
The, um, to, to determine which ones that were unpaid, where that portion would take a little bit of cross-referencing between our record management system and, and the payment data. It wouldn't be an automated process, but we do have information in our record management system that indicates whether the patient was a cruise ship passenger. So we, we probably could dig into that, but it would take quite some work. It would require manually going through the payment records and manually going through our records and cross-mapping them. It would, it would require manually going through the payment records and manually going through our records and cross-mapping them.
I don't know that it's something we need to eat because we get, collect taxes or whether CPF funds could supplement that.
We could easily initially take a look at how many of our responses were to cruise ship passengers. We can easily pull that number and then from there see if it's even a big enough pool to think about considering.
Yeah. Or even just tracking the numbers in the next couple of years because of, you know.
Yeah.
Right.
Back at the travel training, I mean, the education, or the, uh, under the operation division, you have the training and education twenty-one thousand, six twenty. So is that for the school, college for that paramedic stuff or? Oh, J sixteen.
I'm sorry, which page?
J sixteen.
Six hundred dot O two?
Um, six hundred dot O three.
Is that required training or is that the option training you're talking about?
It, it covers several different things. It does cover tuition reimbursement. It would cover if we brought an, if we bring an instructor into, into town to teach a whatever class firefighter, three firefighter, two fire officer, one fire instructor. Any, any of those trainings that we bring in, it would pay for the instructor. And other, just, just any education we do for our employees for their ongoing annual training. It, it's not specific to tuition.
And then over on the grants program where we have the new travel business account, the seventeen thousand, what is that grant for?
Sorry, which page?
Uh, J nineteen.
And I'm sorry, which can you?
Um, six hundred dot zero one.
Six hundred dot O one, travel business. Business travel.
It looks, it's under grants, so it's a.
It has to do with where the grant money, so when we apply for each grant, we have to apply for it under different programs and tell them what we intend to do with it. And that one has to do with Alaska Shield and the fact that there's travel for the planning for that. And we got specific money dedicated to fund that travel needed to plan for the Alaska Shield exercise.
How are we participating?
We are going to do an EOC exercise here locally. We're also going to participate in a statewide hazmat exercise with our hazmat team. And we do receive funding from the state on a regular basis for that as well. And those are the two main activities that we're gonna have going on during this one.
And then over on, so back to grants, we have travel and training forty-three thousand, seven fifty under six hundred point three. And is, what part, what is that containing? It's just down on the same page.
Lou, that's listed under a safer grant, under grants, so what's a safer grant?
That's the tuition reimbursement for our volunteers participating in college programs.
So it's not coming from that other one?
No, that's a different.
And then we had the forty-three, um, last year, we got it to fourteen. I guess, how, does that money just roll over or?
So with the safer grant, it was a five-year grant, I believe, and we had about forty-three thousand dollars per year for each year of the grant. And that was at an estimated number of six students participating, a full course load during each year. And we, especially in the beginning, we didn't have full participation. I believe we're at five students currently participating. So we're getting close to, to needing that full amount.
When did they wrap up from theirs?
I'm sorry?
What year are they in right now? How soon are they gonna be done?
We have two more years left of that after this one, I believe. I think we're in year two right now.
Thank you. Anybody else? For fire? All right. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
That brings us off into the police department. We're on K one.
Lou, do you wanna deal with any of the capital on just like justification for the new hook and ladder?
I mean, you can bring it up now, or you can bring it up here in CP anytime. We were on that department. If you wanna talk to them about that, that's great.
If the chief wants to talk now, why do we need to put a million bucks into the ladder truck?
Sorry, come on back.
Thought I was done. So the ladder truck is seventeen years old currently. It's built in nineteen ninety-eight. It was initially scheduled for replacement, I believe, two years ago. It was on the capital budget. And there were some changes made. They bought an ambulance and a command vehicle in place of it and agreed to shift the ladder truck off for a couple of years. And, you know, the hazard, we, we've got quite a few vehicles and that's probably, that's a, a big portion of our budget, especially if you average it out over the years. And if we continue to push off apparatus longer and longer in our replacement plan, uh, we run the risk of bunching up a, a whole group of them at one time. And so the ladder truck, based on its life expectancy, is getting close. It's the only one in our community. None of our neighboring departments have one that we can rely on. We have thirteen buildings at least that require that based on our ISO, based on the ISO evaluations that have taken place in our community. And it's a significant hit if we don't have that apparatus available. So we can replace it on a schedule. We can wait till it catastrophically fails and then worry about not being able to respond to, to the high life risk that's in those thirteen buildings. But it, it is already in the window to be replaced. It's been pushed off once. And it's important that we keep that apparatus in working order and so that we don't risk not having it when we need it. Yes, we don't need it often, but when we do, it's the only one that will do the job.
Or is it mechanically safe and operational?
It, it is currently, yes. Again, NFPA recommends a certain life cycle for, for these apparatus. And when you get in that window, you're, you're running a risk of not having it. And it's, they have some scientific data behind it as far as life expectancy is based on use. It's just a risk that I'm not sure that we wanna take to not have a well-equipped, appropriate-aged apparatus available for service.
I, you wanna change it off or you wanna keep going?
What?
Well, anyway, my next question is, we talked about a bond, that means sales tax to pay for it over a period of years. And is that the smart way to do it, or should we, I don't know. Is there another way like programming something for three years and having, and buying it? I don't know. Carl, Bob call.
When Abner submitted his proposed budget, um, there was no way that I could include a one point one million dollar appropriation and maintain the level of public work sales tax reserves at, at a near sufficient level. So it was a question of, was there another alternative? And, and a bond was the, the alternative that was out there. We can do sinking funds if that, if that's an approach the council would be interested with. Do four hundred thousand a year for the next three years and then in the fourth year, you, you'd be there. But I think as Chief Hope points out, given the age of the vehicle, there, there's an associated risk with that. If we had chosen to do a sinking fund approach three years ago, we'd have the money now and we wouldn't be in that. The problem with sinking fund approaches is if you don't have enough money, that's an easy target to grab. Say, okay, we're gonna take that four hundred thousand, we're gonna increase the paving to seven hundred from three hundred. It's, it's a balancing act. I don't know where council can produce. The, the bond was, was my preferred approach when I put, when I put the budget together.
Can we bide down the bond a little by using some of our reserve? You have some money in some accounts.
Well, you would want it to come from public work sales tax. I don't.
Well, we have our economic development fund and all that stuff. Pay for half of it.
You're, you're right. Um, let me talk to the finance director about that and we'll come back with an alternative at the next.
I'm just coming up with ideas, I'm just looking for new ways. Um, I have Judy.
Um, so there's no, where, it's only your fire department that has a truck like this? There's none in South Tongas?
That's correct.
It's not in North Tongas?
It's the only one.
Okay. And then the other question I have, and probably because you have new marked beside it, is overtime wages under grants program, eight thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars. Oh, I'm sorry, five zero one dash zero one, page J nineteen.
Five zero one dot O one.
Yeah, it's page J nineteen.
Is that the, the training for, does the state still deliver it? Right?
I get that for probably, I think.
It's for one of the grant programs, and the only place that I can think of that we receive grant money for is, for, as part of Alaska Shield, the state is offering some different trainings. One of them is a law enforcement specific training. And they're going to deliver that class to us and they, they're paying for overtime and backfill wages for police officers to attend that while they're off duty.
Oh, so this, okay.
But because it's in the grant program, we included it in.
In this budget.
Take care of, we included it in this budget, I think.
So this is actually for the police department?
It'll actually be to, to pay for Alaska Shield trainings, overtime and backfill.
Okay, thanks.
Bob?
Yeah, back to the vehicle, vehicle again. So they're recommending that we roll over those equipment based on a, a calendar. In other words, so many years of operation then. And, and Ketchikan is by far different than Seattle or Portland.
Yes, absolutely.
That truck is meeting every one of its certifications today without a problem.
Yes.
The, um, I think, and I don't know what the hours are on that particular equipment, but it's relatively low for the, uh, we just don't use it that much.
Agreed.
Um, I myself personally don't think we need to replace it at this time. I, I agree with you that putting things off, we may bunch them up at some other point. But usually when we retire our trucks, they go to another community, they use them for another ten, fifteen years. But again, this particular truck isn't a truck that gets on the road every day, every week, or even every month. We, we use it, I think, on a South Tongas fire a little while ago, but that was the last major fire that, that it used. A lot of times you'll see it down on a dock where they're flushing it and using it, making sure it's working correctly and that kind of stuff. I think that, I guess mechanically, the vehicle is pretty fit.
It currently would seem that way. NFPA for ladder apparatus recommends fifteen-year replacement cycle, worth seventeen years.
But again, it's based on, it has a, a use formula in there somewhere.
I agree. I have a little bit more information that I wanna add for you that will help you think about it in this way. Um, so we're, we're beyond that, and I agree with you. We, we do use it less. We've put less miles on it, we've put less hours on it. The problem is with mechanical equipment, there's a risk to that as well. The less that you use an apparatus, the more wear that it actually takes. You put a boat in the water and let it sit in our climate for a couple of years, and you're gonna have problems. It doesn't get the use all the time as well, so that can be a danger for us too. And you, you can't predict when a pump is gonna catastrophically fail because it's been, uh, starting to corrode or the connections are, are wearing out or whatever due to even sometimes lack of use. So our combination of less use actually puts us in about the same place when you think about it. And the problem that we really have with that apparatus specifically is, like I said, you have any building over three stories in height, the only way we can do anything above the third story is to use that apparatus. So if it fails or we can't use it because it's getting too old, anything over three stories in our community is at risk. And we have a lot of buildings over three stories. Not to mention, you know, those are well in excess of three stories that have a lot of lives in them. And that's where my concern is the fire chief comes in, is the risk that we're taking in those large life hazard facilities that are over three stories. We got a brand-new hospital or a brand-new expansion of the hospital. We don't have that truck. We can't adequately protect that facility. We can't adequately protect the shipyard. We can't adequately protect Tongas Towers in Marineview, uh, among many others. Um, and so that's where my concern comes in. And the lack of use can cause the potential for failure just as well as excessive use. So I agree with you, we do use it less, but those recommendations are based on sound reasoning and many years of experience. And, and nationwide, there's places that use it way more than we do. There's places that use apparatus way less than we do. And NFPA's recommendations take a lot of that into consideration when they do that.
Again, I, you know, I, I discussed this truck with some with, um, other personnel. And I know that it's meeting a lot of certifications, it's performing well. It sits in a heated building. It's running often enough that we know the pumps are serviced and rolled over and the seals are checked and everything like that. It may be even a fact that this thing could be refurbished cheaper than being replaced. I'm not sure of that. And of course, you're, you're gonna say, well, then we still gotta tip you in your own vehicle, but that, that still, um, as far as equipment goes, that doesn't concern me as much, I guess. So I, I, myself, I'm not gonna support probably doing that particular vehicle this year. It's just, I, I think it's very, a very serviceable vehicle for some years yet.
Dave?
Uh, you mentioned the ISO ratings. At a certain point, if you keep a vehicle much beyond what, you know, officials say, it's, it's, it's usable life is, is that gonna hurt those at all? I mean, we could be, as once again, saving a little bit of money here and.
Off the top of my head, I don't remember if ISO takes into account the age of the vehicle. I know that they, that based, for our ISO rating that we have, we do have to have a ladder truck. And should that go out of service for long term, um, that could put us in jeopardy if ISO were to know about it. But that being said, I can't tell you off the top of my head whether they look at the age.
Um, just to throw something, stick in the wheel, but would it not be recommended to even have two trucks? Just because?
That, that would be very tough to do.
Okay, just curious why we only have one if one went out and.
Judy?
But right now, the truck that we have existing right now is meeting all the certifications.
Right now, today, it's in service. It hasn't failed a pump test. It, it doesn't have any major mechanical issues that we're aware of currently. But it is definitely beyond the recommended age. And every year that we delay, one, we're pushing off that deferred maintenance, that deferred replacement cost to where it's gonna bump up against another major piece of apparatus. And then instead of one to one point two million dollars, you're gonna add on another six hundred thousand dollar fire engine with that. And now you're gonna be coming up with, you know, two million dollars in one year to, just to keep our fleet in service. So you have to make that decision, but keep that in mind with.
I get that, but I just wonder, is there not a better way to pay for it? I mean, I can't see a, a bond of any kind.
Carl's gonna come up with that idea.
Good job.
Didn't we just replace, um, didn't we just replace my last?
We replaced an engine, yes.
Okay.
An engine, okay. That's what I was thinking.
Anybody else have anything on, on fire department?
Mr. Mayor, the, if, if I could.
You bet.
Just one comment I'd like to, I guess, reiterate. As with any piece of equipment, you can defer this. But when this vehicle goes, okay, you no longer have the ladder truck and you will be without a ladder truck.
Why are you dripping that right at me? There's like all these other people I have.
This isn't something that you can get in ninety days.
It's about a year.
Carl's gonna get a new one.
And you need to, you know, as, as a council, you need just to keep that in mind as well.
So we replaced an engine last year. We wanna replace this one this year. Um, do we have something scheduled for next year? When do we run out?
Not a large address, but I do have that information here. Your, your vehicle replacement, the vehicle replacement cycle for the fire department will never end. I I can tell you that, I've looked at it. In twenty seventeen, we're projecting a command vehicle in twenty eighteen, an ambulance. And a command vehicle in twenty nineteen, a pumper.
Which ones are the command vehicles?
Those are your pickup trucks.
So we don't.
They're small vehicles.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Bob?
You know, I know that we've had trouble even with new vehicles with this new tiers three and four engines, and I don't know what you get into in regards to that, but. It doesn't matter if it's a brand new vehicle, it breaks for whatever reason, if they have a wreck with it or without anyway.
Oh, absolutely.
So, um, even though there's a risk associated with no one, there's a risk associated with a new one also. Um, and I'm not, I'm not against having serviceable, good equipment. I just, um, am trying to be responsible in the fact that a million, one is a is a hefty purchase. And if we don't have that in, and that's why when we looked at it and I saw that with a bond, I realized that we were, you know, pushing up against the edge of what our sales tax would take. And so that concerns me, uh, some of the stuff we do have to look at in the financial aspect.
Well, and those prices continue to go up. A couple of years ago, that same engine or same ladder truck was six hundred thousand dollars. And then the new diesel engine requirements that that you're referring to, when those came out, prices shot way up. So, you know, who's to say that the federal government's not gonna give us another mandate here in the next couple of years? And now all of a sudden, that one million dollar ladder truck, because of new requirements, jumps up to one and a half.
What's it trading on here? What's it worth? Right now?
I I don't have the answer, that off the top of my head, we could try to.
Could you find, try to find out? See what we'd be doing?
Find out.
Any other questions? Nick?
Well, it's it's in a heated garage.
It is.
You guys take it out and you use it on it, I mean, you try it, make sure everything. Does what it's supposed to do on a regular basis.
We do check it out.
And I don't, further than that, could, and would it be worthwhile if there is a person that could inspect it and say, unless we're the inspector you're doing?
The way more years we got left on? Like how many more years we got left on?
Well, I don't, I think years, some, I don't think you can judge.
I think you're gonna struggle to find anybody that gives you any estimate on what useful life it has.
No, I don't wanna look useful life, but is there anything mechanically that's that's not obvious to us that would be obvious to somebody else? That would say, maybe we better, maybe we better not, and that would do it at a reasonable cost.
You get up gas, I'll get it.
It's a, it's a good question.
Thing we're gonna have to do in the short term and if we want to get it longer term.
All right. Bob?
I don't know how it works in other cities, but if you had a specialized piece of equipment to service a single industry, is there an assessment towards that industry?
I don't know.
As little as this vehicle is used in, as you're saying, there's about thirteen or fourteen buildings that really require the use of that type of apparatus. I didn't know if there was a fire service rate that.
There are thirteen or fourteen buildings that are evaluated independently of our city ISO rating. But every building that's three stories or more, um, would use that apparatus in performing what we what we do.
Well, it could be a single story building on a hill.
By strict definition, typically three stories or more.
Thank you.
Yes, Dave?
Yeah, I I I I agree, we need to try to find a different way to fund it besides, but just putting it off, just, you know, it's gonna cost more. We don't wanna go there, we just, you know, it probably needs to be done this year. If Carl can find a different way to fund it, that'd be nice, but this isn't something you wanna be kicking down the road.
Anybody else? No, thank you sir again.
You're welcome.
See what happens. All right, that brings us over to the police department. I see Josh is here.
Actually, we don't have any pumppers. Where you hooking others?
Looks like their costs went up nineteen thousand dollars for the year. Not a bad increase.
Yeah, I did bring, um, the K nine program up for discussion and have costs associated with that, I consider. We discussed it early on in the meeting, so.
Has it been discussed? Where are we at on that?
Well, uh, one of the things is, is of course Josh didn't wanna necessarily speak for the chief and manager, the usage and. And how all that goes, but I think it needs to be brought back for reconsideration. When will the chief be back, Josh?
Uh, the chief returns town Friday.
Okay, so we can.
Oh, we put it on a meeting, uh, let's do it before the end of the year, let's make the second meeting in December.
Well, he can come back and do it, we can just flip back in the budget at some point, didn't we, you think?
Well, I think, I mean, the issue, I don't know if the public would want, uh.
Can put on it?
Uh, I I almost think it should be a thing, but it's up to the council, we can do it in the budget time. Let's talk about it in budget time when the chief gets back. Okay, anybody have any questions on, uh. Police budgets? Like I said, it went up nineteen thousand dollars.
No certificate.
I do have a question here.
You bet.
He's already trying to figure out how to get it, right? On, um, the travel business, well, I guess not travel business, but travel training, training and education. How much of the training and education comes out of that pot of federal money that you guys have?
For that fall under our patrol travel training, nothing comes, that money does not come out of the federal. Basically, when we have used the federal funding, we've made a specific item and come and requested it through council, like the blue courage we just did. Basically, we put that together as a, as a minimum project. This is the, this is money we use to send guys to. FTO training, field training officers, um, send guys to interview schools, we have a lot of new guys. We've been in a lot of bigger classes, I mean, this year we're probably gonna consider ho- hosting a traffic accident collision class, we haven't had one of those in a while. So that's what this is all about.
Are you training, is there any training plan for detecting if somebody's under the influence of marijuana when they're driving?
Basically, I'm in contact with the trooper, uh, who's actually running that program, they have a grant. We're trying to get somebody into their, into their program. It's DRE is what it's called, drug recognition. It's very tough to get into the class, you have to have a, have three years doing traffic. You have to send in reports you've written. Get get, uh, recommendations from the DA. So, right now, we're working on trying to get somebody in there. And it's, it's one of the tougher schools for our enforcement right now. Cause you have to not only do the classroom stuff, but then you need to be, I believe it's two weeks of actual field work. And what they do is, right now, they have a grant they put together, you travel down to California or some state. They put you up and not only would you class, but then you go out to different checkpoints, places that you checkpoint, and you just, for two weeks, you you practice your skills.
That's a good idea, I think.
So, but it's there, it's it's one of the tougher classes.
Is it, does you have to recognize the issue?
You need to know all the symptoms, all the reactions, I mean, it's different reactions, different systems for different drugs.
And then, um, one other question. How much money is in that federal pot?
We only, I think we've only used it for two things so far. We, uh, have to make it be two hundred thousand if they have it next year.
Two hundred thousand dollars? So. Is there any reason why we couldn't use that for our training for the next little while until? I don't know. I just wondered, is there any restrictions on it?
There is, there is a rule that basically you can't offset.
Your budget?
Your budget.
Okay, yeah, that's what I wanted to.
There's a lot of things we can use it for, but they're pre- pretty specific that they don't want somebody coming in and saying, okay, well, that that encourage you going out and. Making more of those kind of procedures. So it's, it's not meant to serpant, serpent to the budget you have.
But you will be able to use that if you are able to get people in that marijuana training, would it be?
Um, that one we probably get, um, there's a low, there's DRE, which is the the three week one, I would like to host one, there's like the one week one. And I don't remember what the name of the training is, but I have to work with the Alaska Police Council to try to bring that in. Which is is a very watered down version of that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other police department questions?
Down on the, uh. Capital budget, two police cars for a hundred and almost twenty thousand dollars. Those are pretty good cars.
No, actually, those are the explorers and I would, and not, not all of that is just the cars. The cars have to be, that's lights, sirens, all the, all the stuff that goes on the vehicles. Cameras, the graphics, so that's, that's why it's so much, it's a little bit larger than your average car.
So with regards to overtime, I know that, um, the last time I looked at overtime, a big part of the police department's overtime had to do with dispatchers. And there was quite a lot turned over there. Has that settled down any, is that?
No, we, we are currently fully staffed.
Oh, good, okay.
So I think you'll see a big, unnoticed drop in that area, cause yeah, now we've got all eight. And then we have, not only have the all eight, but, uh, the. Evidence custodian, the admin assistant, who used to be the dispatch supervisor, and then the dispatch supervisor are all trained, so they can actually fill in.
Anybody else? All right. Go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, we talked, uh, Judy mentioned overtime, we're still programming. What did I look at here? Sixty one hundred dollars a year overtime per person.
Well, I think we, um, one thing I'd like to do once we get through the budget, and maybe talk about overtime as an overall issue. And same way with, um. Travel, training, education. With John. Any other questions for Josh? Thank you, sir. Brings us to public health. Hopefully, our public health is good. Thank you, sir. Brings us to public health. Hopefully, our public health is good.
We gave that away to Akila.
Yeah, why didn't we give that away? Can we give that away?
Anybody on the public health?
He said, JG capital improvement program, man, that's, that's alive.
Expansion project continues. All right. We'll jump to library. We have a fifty seven thousand dollar increase. But grants must be high, everybody's getting new grants. I need a grant.
These are client form.
Get them from Morris Communications.
Carl, you probably already asked us, how's our pellet stove working up there?
Mr. Mayor, the pellet boiler does present certain challenges to our maintenance division, but we're making it work.
How are we making it work?
With a lot of tender loving care.
Well, Carl, that it appears in, in looking at the, uh, fuel costs in here, that is it helping them go down?
Yeah.
Cause I noticed it get dropped. And I don't know whether it was because of that or maybe just something else. Cause that was one of the whole attempts was it would drop, but right now was, yeah.
It went down ten thousand.
It went down, yeah. I don't have the page number here where it was, but I do know it went down.
I think in part, council member, Chris, it's been, uh, abused the mild winters that we have been having. And also, we do run the oil generator as well, and not generate oil for boilers and, you know, cost of oil is.
Oil down, yeah. Right, for the last two months, it's down.
Fred?
Yeah, just following up on that, I I noticed recently that they were having some problems, I think it was up in Heans. But, uh, the big, um, pellet generator they had, was was operating for their, for the big community building, was basically not making the, the savings they had thought it would. Are are we realizing significant savings compared to the cost for you, or what's what's your sense of?
I don't think we have enough experience yet that we can make that conclusion one way or the other.
The comment might be, is we've. I think the design on that and the installation probably caused us a lot more problems than we anticipated. Cause it should've worked, so hopefully the airport. Which is putting one in now, and I don't know whether the school's got one coming or not, they do a better job than. Than our contractor who resisted like the devil putting it in.
Well, it's not just us, it's it's the federal ones too, they're they're not showing the savings that probably are, so that's.
Bob?
I think that down to experience, they they've learned that they put in two bigger ones rather than step boilers. And so you can't run them efficiently at a lower temperature. And so they end up having issues at that, if if they'd had two boilers in there that would meet our max potential, you could run one of them probably at an efficiency rate that would work. And I think that's what the borough is gonna do with the airport. Yeah. And and, uh, federal building doing the exact same thing in that CDP center down here that did the same thing.
They oversized them.
Anything on libraries, children, this, everything, UAS.
I found it, it was, it had said that it was down ten thousand. Had it marked, I lost it.
Have we passed on any of our advice to the borough on the airport and stuff?
I don't know if our building maintenance folks have talked to borough staff or not.
If we have nothing on library. Well, I have the museum. Let me know when you're, you're ready for a museum.
Go ahead.
All right, we're at the museum department.
It's just your expression, you look at your library and say something, you know, you're five seconds.
Library is the division of the city that I get the most calls about. But it's the one that I happen to, I love their calendar, I think they do a lot of good stuff in the community. Even though I do get calls about free yoga.
I believe that stopped. And the la- and the lady works for now, not the yoga place down the street, so.
She always did.
Stop, she always did.
Yeah, she always, she always did.
Just so you know, there's another free yoga.
I just learned that. I'm sorry.
Elsewhere. There's another one in the local papers, so.
Hold on, shut them down. You guys.
I know, we probably should be separated.
Do you have a question on museum?
Fix the microfiche machine. Otherwise, otherwise, I'm gonna be coming after you for this.
We're gonna go through cameras.
Yeah, right.
We'll go through cameras.
Calu, question, um, back under the capital site, the bathroom expansion. For three days, the CDP funds, did we just figure out whether the borough was still willing to go with us on that or is that ours?
The last communication I had with the Bruno manager, manager, where those funds were set aside for that purpose, if we were gonna move forward.
I'm sorry, is this the museum or is this the?
Museum, I think.
I think so too. I think the bathroom is okay, it's alive.
Anything, um, the only thing it really increased, it increases eight hundred and fifty six thousand, but I believe that's for capital and some new grants. Otherwise, it's helps that. Otherwise, it's helps that.
So, when they, when they do the heating on the buildings, do they just estimate what they're going to be paying out? For, um, for the year?
On the heating?
Yeah, versus what it's gonna, actually gonna cost?
They estimate.
Obviously, based on, you know, some experience, they just go.
Well, there's a huge difference in the museum, what they spent, what they, what it actually ended up costing them. Or what they have in the budget.
You can ask that question, Carl?
Councilmember Gage, can you tell me what page you're looking at?
Um, seventeen, nineteen seventeen?
For the Centennial Building for next year, we're estimating twenty nine thousand, which is consistent with the last couple of years. That's shown on N sixteen. For the Heraldian Center. We're showing a three hundred and fifty dollar increase for next year. Which is pretty much consistent with what we budgeted for this year. Slightly more than what we was actually spent in two thousand fourteen, about over six thousand dollars. And that's on N eighteen.
Anybody questions on museum?
Museum?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're on museum now.
Shh, guys. I thought he said civic.
I want to get this done so we can get from KPU yet. Not tonight.
Tonight?
No. It's going to be more fun.
On museum?
Yes.
Under CIP, I just have a question. So, we're looking to do the exhibit gallery expansion and the restroom expansion. Next year?
Right.
And why would we do them both in the same, just because it's easier, or why would we do, I'm just curious?
Well, I'll.
Are they being done at the same time?
I'll defer to the museum director first, and then.
Casey Simpson, museum director. Um, the two projects were originally conceived to be separate, mostly because the bathrooms were being funded out of CPV funds, but we decided to combine them, mostly for efficiency's sake, because we're going to be, need to be closed during either construction, be it gallery or restroom construction. Also, it's a more appealing project for architects and contractors if it's combined, rather than two separate things, which may not end up being a unified project in the end. Um, those were some of the reasons we decided to combine the two.
And, but they haven't decided on the final?
No.
Okay, that's what I wanted to be sure, that everybody was getting along.
There's another meeting of the advisory board tomorrow.
Tomorrow night.
That's, I was going to ask, what's the status of that, but I guess we'll find out soon.
So we've had numerous meetings, museum staff and museum advisory board have met numerous times with architects to refine the design that was put in front of the council on October first. And tomorrow, we're looking at finalized designs, so we hope to have a finalized design back in front of the council on December seventeenth.
Great.
Have, have, have any of the funds been looked into for ADA, like for tax write offs for making the bathrooms accessible?
I'm not aware of any tax write offs for those. I know that our bathrooms, for example, are completely uncompliant, so that's something that has to happen with the restroom expansion.
But you might have entered the tax write off on that. There might, there might be some funding as well. The Plaza guy, when we just did the buttons on the doors, we got a nice tax credit for that. I can send that information. I don't know if it works for governments, but.
I would be surprised, but.
Yeah, federal tax write offs are very important for the private sector.
All right, museum questions?
So this meeting tomorrow, are you anticipating agreement between the boards down?
I sure hope so. We're kind of at the end of the line in terms of being able to get a project together for funding in two thousand sixteen. So, I'm, I'm sure hoping so.
All right, anybody else?
What time is the meeting?
The meeting's at four P M. at the Tonga Historical Museum, if you'd like to attend.
It'll scare them.
All right. Let's move over to civic center. Anything on the civic center?
Is there a reason we need to replace doors?
We'll ask, come on up.
Um, our doors are actually jamming, so sometimes they get stuck and people can't get out. So, yes.
That hurts our ISO rating too.
Well, that makes them stay for my singing.
Yeah, that was actually, we were noticing, yeah. We knew it was the problem.
Go ahead.
So, um, on the capital improvement projects, is there any reason why we would, um, put as a number one priority to repaint the building? And as a number seven priority, better handicap access?
Number seven?
For the bathrooms?
Yeah. Um, right now, our, we need to rehammer in the siding. So, it's coming away from the building, so we need to rehammer it in, repudy, and then repaint it, so that we can maintain the siding. Right now, um, our bathrooms do have handicap access, we're just looking to improve it in future years, as.
Thank you for answering that.
All right, any other questions on civic center? I think that's it. All right, that brings us to tourism and economic development.
Right.
Go ahead.
Another question. Patty?
Come on up, Patty.
Good evening, Patty Mackey, Ketchikan Visitors Bureau.
Hi. So, um, I'm looking at this October twenty sixth letter that you sent out, and a twenty nine percent increase. But that's for the website fees?
Yeah.
Have we gone out and, I mean, is there nobody else? That's a lot.
Well, they kind of have us between a rock and a hard place. The, the actual fee is for the platform that all of the information sits on. So, we either pay the increase, which I was actually able to get them to increase gradually over three years, or we then, basically, we would have to go and redesign the website and get a new platform and start over again. And we just relaunched this website. So it's, it's really like the bones of the website, and that's the fee that we pay.
Who's the outfit?
Yeah. Uh, the company is based in California, and they actually own, I can't think of the name right now, but they, they own the software, the programming for the website that our web developer used to build the site. Sitecore is the name of the company.
So the web developer uses their stuff, and they use it as the platform. Who was your web developer?
My web guy is based in Seattle, Dalian Associates is the name of the company we use.
There's no possible way to move that? Do they have the full license on that?
We're talking, this is, this is, all the information is stored in this platform. It means we would have to purchase a new platform, transfer all the information off of the website to another, another provider, who we would still have to pay fees in order to do. I'm, I'm sure you guys can imagine how heavy our website is when you consider all of the pages and information that's on it.
And this is a new website?
We relaunched our website in two thousand fourteen.
And so, and this is proprietary, is what I mean.
Exactly.
And we didn't know that they were going to jack up their price thirty percent.
You purchased your license in three year increments, and when it came time, we purchased the license in two thousand thirteen, because we were building the site. A year later, it relaunched, and then when our renewal came up this last spring, that was when they hit me with the increase.
So, you got it for a three year increment, would you be looking in the future to change platforms?
Well, no, actually, we'll just have to absorb it. I mean, the cost did, I don't know that I could actually get a better deal.
That's right.
Quite frankly, I think all of the, the software platforms of that size or of that capability have all increased. It's, you know, it's what the market will bear, quite frankly, and so, um, they gave, like I said, they kind of phased in the increase for me when I complained about that. But again, you know, that's one thing that's going to go up in our budget next year, so. Just trying to point out why we ask you for more money. It's not just because we'd like to haunt you.
It's the size of your website that they base it on?
It, yeah, it is. I mean, it's the functionality of the site and the capabilities, and, um, of course, you know, keep in mind that there's all the pages of information about Ketchikan, and then there's all of the, uh, different companies that are on the site, and they each have their own page, so it's just a big, complicated site.
Do you have, um, purchasing, um, capabilities on that website?
Uh, no. We've chosen not to actually do that. We actually have some members who don't want us to get engaged in booking for them. They prefer that we direct them to their sites where they already have that capability. But everyone that's on our site, we have links to their websites, and then they can continue to shop when they want to from there.
Bob?
Do those people using your site pay a fee to the visitor bureau?
Oh, mhm, yeah.
And does that go up accordingly?
Yes.
Similar, yeah.
Yeah, the larger their presence, I mean, they can, uh, you know, with their dues, they get a, just a very short listing with links, and then they can purchase additional advertising and additional space on the site.
Anybody else for tourism?
Do you have more of a breakdown on, um, the paid staff?
And could you be more specific?
Well, you, you said you had six paid, um. Breakdown? Yeah. Paid full time, paid part time.
On, you mean on the employees?
Yeah.
Um, no, just what the grant requested, which is the number. What would you like to know?
Just how much of your, um, budget goes into the, um. Do you want a breakdown of paid staff?
In the budget is, there's payroll that's, uh, shown in there. For this year, roughly about a third of our budget is payroll expenses. You have to have people to perform that.
Any other questions for Patty, or anything else on this section? Dick?
Yeah, Lou, um, and I apologize, Patty, I don't know how to answer, ask this question for sure, because I hadn't, I don't recall seeing this or something else, but. I need to know, how much is it costing, how much of this money's going to run the visitor center on berth three? And on berth one and two? Because I know some of the money's going to keep those open. And whether that's coming out of what you're collecting, from what you're collecting from booze, or whether it's ours, but I, there's some issues that, that I've got that I'm going to ask to be corrected. But I don't know where the money's going. It's all, it's marketing, and it's running this, and it's doing that, and is there a breakdown on the budget to show us what our money's doing for us, besides it's going into your budget?
It's in the narrative of my application, and really, the city funds, because they aren't CPV funds, are used predominantly to cover the cost of marketing, with some of it going to cover visitor services. The borough's appropriation, which is CPV, is, um, almost one hundred percent dedicated to running the visitor centers. But be, because of the restrictions on CPV money, that's all it can be used for. Whereas the city's funds from the, uh, economic development, and then the port enterprise, don't have those restrictions. And so that's really, along with the money that we make, as far, you know, make, but as we raise from advertising, sales, and the other revenue generating that we do, that goes into actually paying for the website, and paying for the visitor guides to be mailed out, and paying for the staff to answer the questions, and keeping the facilities open, and placing ads in magazines, and actually doing the marketing part of our contract review.
Okay.
Well, I, I guess.
But I can get, I mean, I can get you a breakdown, but I can tell you that the borough has increased their appropriation over the last couple of years, which has meant more of their, they're covering more of the cost of the visitor centers than what the city funds were in past years.
Because that's the way you're using it, that, that's okay, that's a good description. I, uh, my concern is the main visitor building down there needs to be opened longer on certain nights when a ship's sitting in front of it. Because people need the toilets, and they shut it down at five o'clock, and people are still looking for a toilet. And yeah, you can tell them to go here, and you can tell them to go there, but that's the purpose of that building, that toilet.
Do you need the toilet open?
No, there's a.
About that, the building is typically shut in.
If a ship is departing for, at six P M. or earlier, the building closes at five. If the ship departs after six, and we just have a handful that leave around eight, then the, then the building, and we're talking about the building on berth two, correct?
On two.
On two. That will stay open until six P M. And that's really just because it's been, over the years, we don't have, you know, but maybe a handful of people that want to get into the building after those hours. They're typically back on the ship. But if that is a concern, and you want us to.
My opinion is enough people are looking for a toilet, and, you know, once, once all aboard is kind of, all aboard, that's fine. But it's been either five or six, and I know there's been enough occasions, and, and that probably don't happen two or three times a week. Because the ships aren't always sitting, they're usually gone.
Right.
There are two or three times a week that there's a ship sitting there, and so, that's kind of one of the things that's grinding on a few people.
Okay, well, you can, yeah, for sure.
And I, and I didn't, because, and I didn't realize how you were breaking the funds apart between the borough was doing this, and ours was doing that. I'll have to look at it, so.
Judy?
So we're doing, the city funds is going towards marketing. So when I add up, uh, the seventy nine hundred general marketing, it says two thou, two hundred and nine thousand dollars goes to tourism. Can you just kind of give me an idea of what, is that all advertising? What it, what's two hundred and nine thousand dollars?
Okay, so there's two categories of marketing. There's the, just the general traveler that we market to. That also includes, though, um, our public, excuse me. So we do advertising, um, and when we, when we put out advertising in magazines or, um, other forums like online, we're trying to attract non-cruise, so.
Right, because the cruise ships come here regardless, right?
Right, they come here, and so, the bulk of our efforts with cruise passengers is to get them the information they want while they're here, and encourage them to spend money, I mean, you know. Uh, but for the non-cruise, that's part of our contract with the city, is to go out and try and increase overnight stays, get people into the hotels, and just work to get more people staying in Ketchikan, as opposed to the cruise passengers coming. So that would include magazine advertising, and we do a lot of online advertising because it's cost effective. Would also include social media advertising that we do. Um, there is also postage for sending visitor guides out to people when they request them. Um, but we also have a lot of requests online for, um, where we could, we have the book online now, so people. But we also have a lot of requests online for, where we could, we have the book online now, so people can just go online and look at it. So, that's part of the website cost. The cooperative marketing fees that you see in the budget, those are the fees that we pay. SATC is a Southeast Regional Marketing Group, and we combine resources to market Southeast or the Inside Passage as a independent traveler destination. The ATIA and DCCED fees are our fees that we pay into the state of Alaska's marketing program. Fam trips would include, if we have somebody who is a tour operator who comes to Ketchikan and is interested in booking tours, then we spend time taking them around and showing them the community, introducing them to companies that provide shore, or excursions, talking to hoteliers, that kind of thing. Trade shows, well, we go, we hand out information about Ketchikan at consumer travel shows.
And so, that's what the fifty-nine, okay, so the meetings and conventions is twenty-four seventy-five, that's for going and stuff. And then the tourism part of that, that's the stuff that you bring, that you give out?
Meetings and conventions, that is all specifically, whenever you see a line item that says meetings and conventions, that's to promote Ketchikan specifically as a meeting facility, and it's also part of the promotion that we do that's part of our contract with you to promote the Ted Ferry. So, there's two marketing programs that you're seeing.
So, if you go to a trade show, how do you, how do you determine that? I mean, how do you decide, I'm gonna spend fifty-nine hundred bucks on tourism and twenty-four hundred on meeting? I mean, I'm just trying to, how do you get that?
Those are based on average expenses. We attend more trade shows for travelers than we do meetings and events. And when we send somebody to a meetings and events trade show, it's specifically to meet meeting planners and talk to them about bringing their groups to Ketchikan, so it's a smaller universe.
Do you work with the local businesses on even education within businesses?
Mm-hmm, oh, absolutely. Our, one of our biggest sources of information about groups to get them to come to Ketchikan is local people who belong to those organizations. That's a real big part of our program, is to make sure that they know that we're available. If some people are a little hesitant to want to bring a group to Ketchikan because they're afraid they're gonna get all the work if they're hosting. So, that's why one of our employees is a meeting planner, so that she can actually take some of the load off as needed. And then the rest of the budget, public relations is a huge part of what we do, and that's focused on travel writers and travel publications, getting them to write stories about Ketchikan. So, we're constantly feeding ideas to them about things they can write about, because an article about the community is actually more valuable than the, than putting an ad in the magazine. And then there's a research, which we do frequently, to make sure that we are targeting the right people and saying the right thing in our advertising message. Internet is pretty self-explanatory, and obviously, there's travel costs associated with going out to these events that we go and promote Ketchikan. And then probably the biggest item is the printing and design, and that includes everything from the visitor guides that are produced every year, to designing ads, to other things that we do, printing material that is, you know, things that are handed out, pens and things like that at different events we go to.
Does that answer your question?
Webber, we want to stop at nine, so.
So, for the million dollar, was it a million forty-one thousand? How much money do you think the visitor bureau brings into our community for the...
Well, it's, as far as how much we personally bring in, is a really hard thing to quantify. But if you consider what the sales tax revenues are, I think the last time I looked at tourism-related sales tax figures, we were somewhere around forty-two million, and probably, and probably more than that.
Some of that is, a chunk of that is gonna be cruise ships, right? I'm just wondering, like, is there...
There's no way you can calculate that.
Okay.
And keep in mind that out of a million-dollar budget, you're paying just a third of that. We're always looking for other ways to...
Well, yeah, no, I know, I'm just trying to figure out how we determine what the value is, is all, you know, that's all.
Dick, one last question.
Yeah, Steve, I got four minutes, okay.
Four minutes.
Is there, and I know I've asked this probably every year, measuring our success and, and keeping us even, can, can we tell? I know we can tell how many cruise line people come in, but how about independent people? Can we tell how many get in here? Is it increasing, decreasing, and we probably need some type of report? And you, you mentioned about getting the writers to write stories. Can you, do you track how many stories we get, do they go up or down, or they on a level curve? And is, if you can provide us with some measure of our success?
The quarterly reports that I submit to the city, and you haven't seen the latest one yet, but I do have a few quick numbers for you that I'll share just to give you an idea. But there is always information about where we were able to place articles. I could do additional, if you want to know value of what a magazine article generates because of the number of people that would conceivably view it, I can do that. But it will fluctuate up and down every year as far as the writers that we get. And sometimes you have a writer here, and you don't see something for a couple, three years. So, it does go up and down. But just to give you real quick, because I know it's almost nine o'clock. Our hotel occupancy this year went through the roof. After years of being down, we saw a twelve percent increase in the second quarter and a sixteen percent increase in the third quarter. Our air, and it started to climb last year, so that was, you know, before Delta came in. But this year, with Delta being in Ketchikan, we saw a thirteen percent overall increase in people arriving in Ketchikan during the months of May through September. And of course, we know cruise was up, it was up over eleven percent from last year. And just slightly under one percent of, below what it was in two thousand thirteen, which was a record. And it'll be flat in two thousand sixteen, that's kind of the best predictions we have right now. Ferry, of course, is down almost twenty-four percent this year, and a lot of that has to do, not everybody, you know, most people who get on the ferry don't get off in Ketchikan and actually stay, they keep going north. But the ferries were really plagued by not only scheduling, but a lot of repairs, and so, a lot of the ships were off going this year. So, there's kind of a quick snapshot.
Can you split the hotel use between visitors and business?
We can look at meetings and conventions numbers and general...
Okay, I wasn't thinking that type of convention, I was thinking of somebody's coming in to work at the shipyard or something like that, who are actually in here on work detail rather than something outside. If you get my, you get my gist...
Yeah, and I understand, you're trying to make a, a point for what can we personally say that we bring in, but it's a very difficult thing to do, because the, when did I take credit for something? One of my hoteliers will say, well, no, you didn't do that, we didn't. So, I choose, try to try not to walk that line.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Patty.
Thank you.
All right, it's nine o'clock, my bedtime, so we quit tonight.
You turn into a pumpkin.
Any council comments, Dick?
I don't think so.
Judy?
Not tonight, thank you for everybody. No, I'm good.
Julie? Bob?
There is a meeting tomorrow evening to talk about state budget.
Oh, shoot.
Dave? It's tomorrow evening, isn't it?
Your budget's going down, eh?
You may have to be around by tomorrow evening.
Isn't it at six?
Hold on a second, Dave, do you have anything else to say? Okay, Carl, did you want to say something?
Your next budget meeting is Tuesday.
Tuesday and Wednesday.
Tuesday would be my intent to have public works in progress, if you want KPU Tuesday.
No, we're gonna finish up the city on Tuesday, and we'll try to start KPU on Wednesday.
I won't be here on Tuesday.
That's fine, we'll work without you.
Can't imagine that's possible.
He who's here will work. Tomorrow, I guess we do have the, Bob mentioned a meeting, we have the museum board meeting, I'm gonna have a hawking meeting. We're gonna have all kinds of meetings. The one we're working on to bring you back that ordinance on no hawking in your doors.
Like hockey?
She got really excited.
That would be cool.
She's thinking, wow, arena, arena, yeah.
Okay, do we have a motion to defer the budget till Tuesday?
I'm gonna defer.
Defer, defer. If we approve it, we're all done. Let's approve it.
Everybody in favor of that?
Yes.
I made a motion to adjourn.
You're gonna do adjourn?
We're adjourned, thank you.